Yeah.
I thought it was the thing you were saying.
Yeah. And then you have video on your phone.
And last night I was out at the end of the work and I put it on sensor mode and I came back. Oh, there's two alerts. I'm looking, somebody parked next to me.
Oh.
This lady getting out of her car.
We don't know.
Oh, that's cool.
But it's nice.
I want to talk later about it because my wife is...
I didn't know.
Uh, she wanted me to get out of her car and I was going to.
I knew it.
The ones I was in.
I was there.
And I'm like, you know, I'm not, I can't do that because I have twenty grand more than. So I lied to her.
Yeah, hold on for a minute.
So.
It was that.
How many miles? A hundred and electric, what did you get?
I did not.
How many miles will it go?
I don't know.
You know.
It's a two seventy.
As long as you're.
I know, I was like one month ago.
The real range you're gonna look at is how far can you go at highway two seventy-five to eighty miles. With probably two hundred. With just like, yeah, there's no other option.
Oh, it's all electric.
Yeah, there's no fuel.
Yeah.
That's what it has, nothing.
Oh, yeah.
I was looking at other vehicles. I looked at an X three, I looked at a Volvo, they were all like, the charge would only get.
No, I worked with a clear coat.
Or so.
They were.
Yeah.
Hybrids.
Yeah.
They need like fifteen, twenty grand more for a hybrid.
Yeah.
This is.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I got to work, had to run out of fuel.
I drive ninety miles a day, but save you if it's gas. I mean, it gives us a lot of gas.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. And it costs you two dollars.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
And it's the nicest car I've ever driven.
Yeah.
Just to prove that I am not a team like you, I never thought you were. Even though I are a team, I have electric cars.
When we played video, and there were videos played.
Oh, yeah.
Just thinking like.
Eighty six, is it double?
I'm making this up.
Yeah.
I take one later.
For me too.
Yeah.
I need to, I need to take it like. There you go.
Okay.
Well, no, they'll be more late, right?
Oh, well, the hell, they're.
There you go.
I got plenty.
Don't put it on me then.
I didn't.
Oh, I'm good.
I think they're using perks and stuff.
I thought we were using stall try five.
I did. I'm gonna talk, touch on it and then estimate some.
Hmm.
Actually, I, for the, uh, I actually said they could just ignore it. Hey, um, I didn't.
Oh.
No, so Marcus, like, nobody else.
I spoke to Doug and Jennifer this morning or this afternoon.
Well, we have to say, I've been trying.
Uh, okay. He turned the form in. Okay. So is, she talked to them? Just like they're doing it, but I had to fill out a form and give them all my ID and all that. To Verber and what?
People I wanted to.
Yeah. Not worried, I just wanted to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Yeah, but this is the official time.
Oh.
All right. Are we ready?
Yes.
Alive? All right, I will call, seeing this form, I will call to order the regular meeting at six oh one P M. The form has been met. Um, will you take the roll call or do I need to second the motion?
Second.
If I do, there we go. What's that sign? Okay.
Mr. Crady.
Here.
Mr. Bidman.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you for that. Uh, I will make a motion to move into closed session at six oh two P M. Uh, we will follow the open meeting back and forth listed in the agenda. Um, can I have a roll call vote please?
Second.
I need a second.
Yeah, you got it.
The second.
Hi.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mr. Crady.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bidman.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Yes.
Oh, I think. Yes. That's my character right here. And it was on last. I first think Carol, I was taking a dive.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Hi Laurie.
How are you?
You're standing.
Then the next thing you're down on the ground.
Holidays. Well.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, holidays. Okay, how are you?
Anything I can carry?
Oh, yeah. So, the holidays.
Sure.
Yeah. Um, you guys tell me, they do not work, correct?
No, they work. Oh, federal holidays is not.
Okay.
Well, I'm trying to.
The, uh, the institute days that really hug that.
So.
They are reduced staff.
No, I have.
Okay. So, on. Okay. So, on federal holidays, are we supposed to be holding sports practices and prep that, stuff like that?
Well, we, you know, we don't want to do the operations. I mean, local, they'll, they'll send people in, we'll have to pay for it, but we've done it all the time.
Okay.
We've always done that.
Okay. I just wanted to double check because.
Well, twenty-one years ago, we were here three hundred and sixty-five days a year at the high school. I mean, the churches, because there were two churches.
Well, that's true. That's true.
Christmas Eve, it was nuts.
Yeah. Um, yeah, because anthrax, yeah, because I'm doing all the. Yeah, but it's. I don't think it was.
Well, but the thing is, what do they need, do they, they don't want a custodian just to open the door, I hope, for crying out loud. I usually call Wilson and say, are you serious?
Well, there's supposedly a football game scheduled that day too, and I think.
Oh.
It's gotta be.
They better do that.
It's gotta be wrong.
That's a conference thing.
It's gotta be wrong.
The season starts probably in the next week, doesn't it?
Yes.
It ain't like it's some special kickoff to yours thing or anything. I don't know.
No.
Glenn will have to answer that, but.
Yeah.
God, if they gotta do it, we gotta do it.
Okay.
We're not gonna rock the whole conference because we don't want to come to work today.
Oh, no, no, no. I mean, I just, I, I think it's, it's probably gonna stick.
Oh, what am I doing? Good place coming back. How you doing Greg?
Good, thanks.
Come on, if you don't know, who does?
My part of the circuit hall. Uh, when, we had forty minutes runtime on the UPS when it was turned back on. For some reason, when it, you told me it was gonna turn on in a few moments. I was like, I don't have to turn off these remaining things. Just a little bit later, the UPS went off. So I think there must have been some surge. It could be the problem with UPS, but the UPS did not like turning on the power, so it shut itself down.
Oh.
But.
Ouch.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
...
All right, we will resume the regular meeting at 7:05 Eastern. Can I have your call?
Mr. Crady.
Here.
Mr. Bitman.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
All right, there's no action from the closed session. We will resume the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we have public comment. Are we beginning public comment? So, Diana, perfect. We need to put the microphone on, there's a little button there.
That's good, we'll go there.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Very glad to be here tonight, to speak in front of you. As you continue your work to determine the levy that you will be agreeing upon for the next school year, every 1% in reduced levy will diminish the money available to provide education to Huntley children by $800,000. 3% versus 5% equals $1.6 million less dollars for our kids. That same 1% reduction will save a homeowner of $300,000 home about $45 a year. So divide that by 12, it's not very much money. Property values are directly related to the reputation of schools in this area. The National Bureau of Economic Research reveals that for every dollar spent on school funding, property values increase around $20. Huntley teachers are paid less than teachers in nearby large unit school districts. Negotiations will take place next year for a successor collective bargain... Negotiations will take place next year for a successor collective bargaining agreement. Our school districts with whom Huntley must compete for talent, goods, and services are levying to realize full funding potential. If Huntley reduces its levy, it will be at a competitive disadvantage to the other districts. The property tax extension law limits PTAL. A reduction in this year will forever reduce Huntley's access to revenues, placing it at a competitive disadvantage. Inflation over the last seven, excuse me, inflation over the last year was 7%. A 5% increase in the extension still will leave the district struggling to meet increased costs for everything. A reduced 3% request would create an additional $1.6 million budgetary challenge. Huntley's EVA equalized assessed value per student ranks in the bottom third of comparable districts. EVA per student is a measure, is a measurement of the wealth and the levy of the district. Lower base usually means higher rate, but the district's tax rate of 5.73% per $100 also ranks among the lowest in comparison to the districts. This is a personal note, my daughter-in-law has taught in Huntley schools for, I think she's 30, 23rd or 24th year. She stays because of family and because of relationships that she has to Old Town Huntley, old-time Huntley people, and so forth. Her sister also does. Driving another mile and a half into Algonquin. She stays. At 5%, not at 3%. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the comment. Kenneth Kelcher?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, thank you for allowing us to come speak to you. I'm Ken Kelcher. I'm a Sun Cityan and have been there since 2004. So I have actually been here for a long time seeing this school grow and become an outstanding school system, school district. One of the things that, you know, nobody likes to pay taxes, but the fact of the matter is, our, our resources, as you just heard from the previous speaker, in terms of home values, have increased as a result of this school district. And it continues to boggle my mind why we would be thinking about going in a different direction rather than supporting the school itself. The teachers, the blended classroom activity. I, I have a grandson who graduated from here four years ago and is now at University of Missouri and has done very well as a result of what he learned in this school. I have a granddaughter in her junior year. And one of the things that, I don't know if it's clear, is sometimes, we're 10,000 of us in Sun City. And when we talk about the local school systems and so forth, that actually becomes an attraction for our children and our grandchildren to actually consider moving here. So it's not a deficit, it's something that people are looking for. So we have an outstanding school, the teachers are terrific. We come over here each year for
Good evening. I'm a taxpayer here. I'm a taxpayer of Illinois, taxpayer of the U.S. And I, one thing that I demand and I expect is excellence and competence. And today's workforce requires both of those. If you're, if you go to the hospital and you look at the computers and the equipment that's being used, you need an excellent workforce to operate that equipment. You need competence in your airline pilots, you need competence in your science, scientists, you need competence and excellence in climate change and addressing climate change problems. So that is what we require and what we demand from our schools and our, and our workforce. And you can't get competence on the cheap, okay? No organization can accomplish excellence on the cheap. We need to have the money to do the job. Our students need to have pride in their schools. Whether you're in first grade, third grade, seventh grade, 12th grade, you need to have pride in your school. And that starts at the top. And that starts with the staff and with the administration and with the teachers. And you can't do that on the cheap either. So, so we need to have, to instill confidence, excellence, and pride in the schools. And we've done that in the past, and I hope that we continue to do that. We need to have, let me see here. We can't do that by cutting our, our staff and our, our administration. We can't do that on the cheap. We need to take care of our teachers. We need to pay them. They need to be compensated fairly for what they do and demonstrate that the District 158 values our teachers and our administration and our staff. And that can't be done on the cheap. We don't, we don't want to be known as a revolving door administration or a revolving door teachers in our district. So we, we need to have those people stay and continue to teach and teach our children. So, you know, in my view, we don't need to reduce the tax levy. You know, you have a fiduciary responsibility to watch the dollars that are spent here in the district. And we haven't had a problem with that in the past. And so, you know, we need to make sure that we have enough money in our budgets to do our, to have our programs and to teach our children. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. All right, I will move to adopt the agenda as presented unless there's any changes. But second.
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crady. So can I get any roll call?
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mr. Bittman.
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Crady.
Yes.
All right, with that, I guess I could have been a voice call, so I apologize for that. But Ms. Lombard.
So just a few updates and announcements. We're going to go back a week before the start of the school year. On the 8th of August, Huntley 158 was recognized as a, by the Department of Education as a green ribbon school. And Mrs. Barr is going to be working on putting out a press release there to give a little bit more information, but just wanted to highlight a little bit of that. That Huntley Community School District 158, a 2023 U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon School, was honored in a ceremony on Tuesday, August 8th in Washington, D.C. Huntley was one of 26 schools, 11 districts, and four post-secondary institutions honored for their innovative efforts to reduce environmental impact and cost, promote better health, and ensure effective environmental education. And so part of that, there were presentations and there were activities, both at the Department of, Department of Energy and Department of Education. And there were four of us that were out there. It was Mr. Rinkoffik, Mr. Olmeyer, myself, and Mr. Troy. Part of that presentation based on the work that started about 14 years ago. And so some of those highlights of why Huntley was honored and awarded this recognition were based on changes to the energy consumption components, lighting retrofits, HVAC, high-efficiency equipment upgrades in schools and district facilities, no cost to District 158, the solar installation panels in 2020 across the three campuses, and the shift in purchasing of propane buses, as well as receiving funding to assist in the purchase of those four electric buses there. As we were out there, there were, it was really a great opportunity to be able to network with others who received this award this year, to talk about ways that we could incorporate our students into thinking about the things that we have already done. You brought up climate change and all of those things. And here are some of the opportunities that we can get our students involved in what's been going on, because they're the generation that's going to make that difference. And to see things from Washington to Indiana, there were things right there in Washington, D.C. It was, it was a really great opportunity to look at how we are doing those things for our students. It's not just about saving and shifting dollars. It's really being, talking about how we can make an impact on the future generation and the future of our environment. And so we've got some great ideas that really just take shifts in what we have our students and our staff doing when we're talking about extracurriculars and clubs and things like that. So we have some great opportunities that we look forward to possibly bringing here in the future. So that was, that was pre our new teachers coming. So Thursday, we had our new staff for two days, shifting into Monday. And Tuesday, all of our staff came back. We had about 1,400 staff members, give or take a few there, that participated on Monday in a number of activities, professional development and meetings. And I will not take the thunder away from Dr. McCrindle to talk about those pieces from the learning and innovation. But then we fast forward to Wednesday and about 8,400 students entered into our 10 buildings, when I say buildings, you know, the various components of our schools and whatnot between yesterday and today. So we had a great opportunity to be out there, seeing the excitement from the teachers, the other staff members and the students really coming back. And it's only been two days, but to see the positive energy that we are hoping will rise through the remainder of this school year, it was really great to feed off of those things. And so with a little bit of that, we put some of our captured moments on video. And Mrs. Barr is going to just play a little, little welcome back video.
We had so much fun reading with you and practicing kindness this summer. I can't believe it's already time to head back into the classroom. From our Raiders Come Together movie night to our back-to-school events such as material pickup, jumpstart, Raider rally and more, I was reminded of how amazing our Huntley 158 community truly is and how grateful I am to be part of it. Huntley 158 is not a single teacher, it's not a set of administrators, it's not a couple of school buildings. It's all of you. It's our staff, it's our students, it's our families. You are what makes Huntley 158 so great. So let's head into the school year as one community. And remember to incorporate everything we've learned about what it means to be kind into our classrooms and our school buildings. Although there are many changes happening this year, I'm so excited to lead and learn with each of you. Here's to a great year in Huntley 158.
It was really, really energizing to be out there. And, and the students and the families, we saw so many activities going on with these Black Lives School Days, if you will, and it's going to be exciting here, so.
Who was our videographer for that?
That was Kenny.
Yeah. That's great.
You have highlighted a little bit of the communications department a little bit, but she took video from each of those events and put that together today for us since we have kids coming off the buses today, so. One of the things too, I just wanted to highlight is that it's only been two days, but this Sunday, we'll be sending out our first district newsletter that will go out to all of our families and community. It will highlight a lot of reminders and information for moving ahead. A little bit different than the ones we'll have in the future that will be really talking about and celebrating the things that have happened, but we're only, again, we're here for three days once that goes out. And so that will go out Sunday evening. And we'll do that the third Sunday of every month to be sharing that with our families. One other thing I wanted to highlight just briefly is things are really going very, very smoothly. There will be bumps and hiccups and things that we need to highlight and to change as we go through. And one of those is just with transportation. Have seen an increase in our resources. We're continuing to hire. So that will be something that will assist as we try to increase some of the time and the ridership. We do still have three schools, three buses at one school that due to resources, they have to double back. And so that, we had eight at the end of the school year. So really been doing a lot with our human resources and our recruitment on that this week. Some of our challenges at the secondary level are just knowing who is going to ride the buses, especially at the high school, but a little bit at the middle schools too, right? That fluctuates because the weather's a little bit nicer, sports and activities are going on. And so throughout all of this week and all of next week, transportation is doing headcounts. And based on those numbers, they will be splitting routes, they will be making transitions. Our buses can hold anywhere from 77 passengers to 83 passengers. However, we know 77 or 83 little bodies in kindergarten and first grader are very different than when you get up to the high school. So we try not to max out those. But it is a little bit of a guessing game at the very beginning because people's circumstances have changed. And so we will be working with that. Dr. Zer looks at those numbers every day with transportation. And there will be some shifts being made to those. We'll be forward and we encourage anybody who does have any concerns to reach out and we can look at those and kind of have a priority list of how to tackle and address those things. And then lastly, it was really, really exciting to see a lot of the summer work that's been done around our behavior management, our CHAMPs and our culture of learning. You see the visuals everywhere. We saw kids practicing those things. It's everything from how we act in the classroom to the hallway, to the bathroom, to cell phones, right? In the middle schools and high school, luckily, we haven't had that issue at the elementary. One of the things that Dr. McCrindle and I did after just hearing a public comment last time, I know it's a step in the right direction, it doesn't fully tackle the technology issue, but is to take those PDIS CHAMPs and put together a be responsible, be respectful, be safe, and be involved that will pop up as kids are opening up their Chromebooks to work on there. And there's some things to highlight there. So that's one piece that we tied in with our CHAMPs and culture of learning component for all grade levels there. And so we'll continue to look at other ways to ensure safety in the technology area as well.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to number eight, the Assistant Superintendent for Learning and Innovation Report, Dr. McCrindle.
Good evening. I have two updates. The first one is regarding a Title I, Part 1003 grant that we have, which is a part of our Title I grant which goes to support high and middle school, which is our school that was designated last year as targeted based off of the EL learners' scores. And so ISD has awarded Huntley 158 an additional dollar than we thought to help support our EL learners. The total is $79,040. And it's supposed to help our, we're targeting our support based off the EL learners' subgroup. We still don't know if we're going to be a school targeted again based off of this next year's data, but the state went ahead and issued these extra dollars to the districts who were identified last year. And of course, there's a deadline to accept the dollars of September 1st. So again, we still don't know if we are targeted again, but we're going to accept the dollars because it's going to help us be able to continue to provide more support to our EL learners and our staff. So no matter what, even if we maintain that rating So no matter what, even if we maintain that rating or it goes away, we still need to keep those dollars here internally, which is good news. So we've worked with Mr. Gibbs and his building team, he's over here at Heinemann, and our plan is to utilize that funding to provide some additional training to any of our teachers working with ELL learners at that building. We've been looking at, there's a, I guess, a group that's called GOLAD, it's Guided Language Acquisition Design, and they give specific ELL learner strategies that any teacher can include in their classroom. And so Ms. Panto Jordan is working on how we could bring some of that training into our staff, so that then they can use our own curriculum and utilize those strategies with our students. So we're very excited to have those extra dollars, but we want to let you know we are going to accept the extra dollars, and even though we're waiting on our ratings, we'll keep you informed. Any questions on that one?
No, thanks.
Okay, and then my second update is a beginning of the year professional learning. So we did have a great start to our year, and we were very excited to have our staff back. We had our back-to-back two institute days, this is the second year we've had two days back-to-back in our district. Prior years, we just had one, and then there kind of a break, and then the students team. So this is our second year of that. Our goals were, we have five goals. One was to communicate the focus for us throughout the school year, and Ms. Lombard did that with her initial address to the staff. We also wanted to give time to reconnect and refocus at the building level, so each building and staff had time as a group to focus on some building goals and reconnect. We wanted to reset our structures, our routines, and to revisit our behavior management practices. Our fourth goal was to provide staff with individualized time that they could use on their own to help prepare themselves to be ready for everything of the year. And then we really tried this year to tailor some of our support to staff based on the different groups that we have. So we were able to provide training to our transportation, our paraprofessionals, our classroom teachers, and it was differentiated based on kind of some roles. So we are going to send a survey out to our staff over the next, probably next week, to get their feedback, to see if we achieved those goals. We're also going to survey our new staff, to get their feedback on our onboarding processes and our new staff institute days as well. And we'll use that feedback to speak our plans as we move throughout the rest of the year with our institute days, and also to provide additional opportunities to support them. And so we'll provide an update to get that feedback back from them.
Any questions? Thank you. All right, moving on to number nine, Assistant Superintendent for Special Services, Ms. Gibbs.
I'm not helping, then help me. All right. Ready? I'm still relatively new to this, so grace is the name of the game. Funny friend. I didn't make it easy for her either. It's like, all the same. All right. All right, well, thank you so much. I wanted to, again, thank the board for giving us the opportunity to highlight some of the wonderful work that we're doing in special education. I think this is a really unique way and wonderful way for us to begin highlighting some of that work, and really excited to share. So thank you again for that. Tonight, really, we'll give a brief overview of one of the resources we have in our, in our district and in our special services department, specifically our special services parent liaison. So we'll introduce her to you. We'll talk about her role and highlight some of the events and opportunities that she really supports for our families who have children who have some special education needs, and we are really working hard to make sure they are connected to what's happening both here in the school and in the community. And then we'll let you know how to get in touch with her. I'm not going to make you come up, Joe, but if you could just kind of play, I know that I promised I wouldn't make her come up and speak. Should we change your mind? Nope, you're still, you're still good. Okay. So Jill is really one of our most passionate special educators. She has been a parent of a student with some special education needs, she has been an educator and an interventionist. She is really passionate about the work she's doing in advocacy and really partnering with parents to teach and coach around special education, which can be a really challenging place to be when you're a parent, and we really appreciate that. So she comes to us in our district with lots of experience, both as a parent and a special educator, that really helps her help our families by collaborating, understanding from the school side of things as well as the parent side of things. Her experience with collaborating at state and local county resources and agencies really gives our department a leg up on some things, which I'm excited to talk about in a minute. So I know Jill is extremely passionate about special education, and she is board certified in advocacy and special education, which is a super special role. In general, her role here in our department is evolving, of course, as everything in special education does, but there are really three main areas that Jill focuses on. One is education, and that education is really tailored for families who are learning about special education, individualized education plans, advocacy, what's available, how do we learn more about the disability and how we support students and individuals with disabilities in our community. Also connection, so Jill spends a lot of time learning about community resources to bring to our families. Some of those examples might be options in advocacy at McHenry County, Clearbook, the Art of Illinois, Center for Independent Living, Pioneer Center. They're all agencies that are extremely helpful for our families in our community. In addition to that, Jill really serves in a role of partnership. One of the most important things for our families is to ensure that they're understanding special education as it was in the school. It's a hard road to navigate on your own, and so sometimes bridging that is something we just need to make sure we have in sight. So her partnership with facilitating communication between parents, schools, community, and assisting families in seeking community, seeking solutions and community resources to support them. Those are three main areas that Jill supports us in. Some of the things we know we've hosted in the past and will continue to see, different events and opportunities, things like resource fairs, mental health fairs, transition to adult resource fairs, education around transition services, especially as it relates to our students who are exiting through the life program, and parent coaching and connection. So as we have events and have targeted email blasts to announce those, there are also families and teams who reach out to Jill, this is her contact information. She offers in-person meetings and virtual meetings, phone calls, there's home visits, there's a lot of different ways to reach Jill, and we really appreciate the support that she's offered to us in our department, to our families, and look forward to continuing to grow that role in our department. So trying to highlight that and say thank you to Jill, and again, thank you for letting us talk about some of the wonderful work in special education.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Any questions or comments? All right, moving on to number 10, Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Allmeyer.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Administration, please present the FY '24 Display Draft Budget, so in your packets, you do have the display draft of the budget. Quite a bit to talk about tonight in preparation for the budget hearing, which is going to be held on September 21st. Currently, the display draft budget is a balanced budget with a $447,000 operating surplus. I do want to start with this, because I do want to further explain the display draft portion of the budget. So it's a requirement from the state of Illinois, right? The budget shall be on display, according to state code, at least 30 days prior to final action, which according to my calculation, based on September 21st, is, well, in a few days from now, we should have the budget on display. So the budget will be on display starting tomorrow morning. So that's the importance of the display draft. As you previously know, as we talked about in previous board meetings, the board approves two drafts of the budget, the tentative draft of the budget, and then the final draft of the budget. The final draft of the budget, which will happen a month from now, on September 21st, will have changes versus this draft, and that's normal, common practice, because, well, the state of Illinois, and whether it's the transportation reimbursement, it's the private facility reimbursement, or it's the evidence-based funding calculation, a lot of that information isn't always released this early. So there's a lot of changes with a lot of our grants still coming down the pipeline, so we will see a lot of those changes. What I would like to do tonight is cover just a few of the high-level assumptions, kind of that we have covered in past meetings, the modifications certainly from the last draft, adjustments that have yet to be made, and some of those are pretty large. We're going to talk about evidence-based funding and a few other, the transportation reimbursement, a few of those that we know are going to be material adjustments that will be made in the next several weeks. And lastly, we'll talk about the continued risks that we have with the budget. With the budget assumptions in summary, as with prior years, the budget, here's the good news, the budget continues to reflect the strategic plan of the district. It continues to provide the things that, well, we need to provide our special ed students, the things that we need to provide for technology for our teachers and our students, the Chromebooks, the laptops. It provides, well, capital expenditures, capital resources, so that, well, we can continue to repair our roofs and make sure that we have our systems and our mechanicals in place, so that, well, we can keep kids comfortable while they're learning, so that, well, they can maximize learning. So all of those things are in the budget, and budget does follow the strategic plan of the district. Specifically on the revenue side, the assumptions, which is the majority of our revenue, with property taxes, the assumptions that are in the plan, while the 2022 levy, not this upcoming levy, but last year's levy is locked and loaded, so 50% of our property taxes are already guaranteed, because they were extended at 5% with new construction that came in at $26.25 million. In addition, CPI is capped for the 2023 levy at 5% within this display draft of the budget, and we're also estimating new construction to be at approximately $15 million for the property taxes within this budget. State funding reflects the annual hold harmless with the annual additional evidence-based funding model, with the state continuing to set $300 million aside for education. It's pretty certain that year over year, based on the tier that we are in, we receive generally the same amount of additional funding. So let me give you an example, several years ago, we were in Tier Two, and on an annual basis for four years in a row, the district was receiving an additional allocation from the state of Illinois, approximately from $675,000 to $693,000. Well, last year, we dipped into, well, we went into Tier One. We were determined to be a district, well, that had more needs. We were further, falling a little further away from adequacy at the state level, and our funding went from $693,000 to $1.3 million. And so within this budget, we have budgeted $1.3 million of additional state money. Well, at the end of last week, we received, well, notice from the state of Illinois, that they finalized the evidence-based funding calculation, and then looking at that calculation, the district was allocated $2.8 million, not the $1.3 million. And we started looking at that, and I started talking with other CFOs across the state, because I know a lot of CFOs across the state, and many of us thought, oh, this doesn't look right, because the state of Illinois continued to allocate that $300 million, and most districts every year were counting on the same dollars year over year. So there was a lot of discussion amongst the CFO groups, a lot of discussion amongst the superintendent's groups. And so at that time, when I was building this final draft that you have in front of you, we opted not to put that in there yet, because the last thing we want to do is put a number in the budget that the state says, oh yeah, we made a mistake. So we did hear back on the day that this was published on Tuesday, late Tuesday, too late to make the change, we did hear back from the state of Illinois, and I talked to a representative at ISB who mentioned, oh no, we also, we also double-checked these numbers, because we were also alarmed when we saw the numbers. But the reason for the increase in Tier One funding amongst most Tier One districts are that we had a lot of Tier One districts fall into Tier Two. And when they fall into Tier Two, they receive less money. And we had a lot of Tier Two districts that, while they fell into Tier Three, which, when you fall into Tier Two to Tier Three, you go from $675,000 to about $14,000. So there was a lot of districts that went from Tier Two to Tier Three, and really received hardly anything, and a lot from Tier One to Tier Two. And all those extra dollars, approximately $50 million, was then further allocated to the Tier One districts. Well, we didn't receive that information until late Tuesday, so that was very good news. Along those same conversations, I was talking to Rockford Public Schools, and this is kind of an example that solidified all this. The CFO from Rockford Public Schools, I looked at his numbers, and I said, Greg, your numbers, you're losing $6 million. Their EBF annuals funding went down $6 million. And he said, yeah, I questioned that too, but then I looked at everything, and I talked to, I talked to the state as well. Their funding, they fell into Tier Two. So Rockford went from a Tier One district to a Tier Two district, and their funding is reduced by $6 million. And then he further said to me, he said, well, the reason the majority of a lot of these big districts fell from Tier One to Tier Two, or Tier Two to Tier Three, is because of CPPRT, because local funding significantly, significantly increased from any district. For our district, it increased, but not as much as some other districts with a lot of commercial property, right? And so Rockford is an example, he said, Mark, he goes, I have to be really honest with you, we had so much, he goes, you'll never believe what we received in CPPRT last year. Rockford received $80 million in CPPRT. He goes, oh my God, I don't know what to do with it all. And he said, so although we lost $6 million, we, we made it up with all the additional CPPRT that we received, thus the reason we fell into Tier Two, so which further solidifies and supports the fact that, okay, this, this is a real number. So the reason I tell you all that is because that's good news for the district, for sure, right? The district will receive an additional $1.6 million in state funding. In fact, just yesterday, we received our first allocation of EBF, and sure enough, it is based on this number that we're talking about here. So in the next draft of the budget, I will be adding $1.6 million of additional revenue. But when we talk about risk to the district, and we talk about some of our budget assumptions on the expense side, we'll talk about how we may have to allocate some of those dollars. So I wanted to share that with the board as well. So very good news for the district, but at the same time, caution, because if you remember me talking in the last several months, CPPRT, we have adjusted CPPRT several times, because the state of Illinois, the Department of Revenue, over-allocated CPPRT to school districts. And so we are no longer going to receive, last year, we received $1.5 million in CPPRT, that's going down to about $1.1 million. And so as that happens, a lot of the districts that fell into Tier Two will come back into Tier One, and we can't always think that we're going to continue to receive $2.8 million, because we're not. Okay, that's going to kind of be a moving target over the next few years as CPPRT can level off.
Mark, sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 that was a lot I shared, but I really wanted to make sure that.
We're probably wondering what CPPRT stands for.
And that's Corporate Personal Property Replacement Taxes. I am sorry, folks.
One more time.
Corporate Personal Property Replacement Taxes. And we receive that money from the state of Illinois as a portion of commercial income taxes.
It's a income-based tax for businesses that are either escorts, partnerships, a certain level of corporations, that in your area, you're getting insured of that. And that was called replacement tax, because back, history lesson, back to 1969, Illinois used to have personal property tax that they've replaced with their state income tax, and that took the place of it.
So, so very good news, but at the same time, needed to let the board know that that is not in this draft of the budget, and will be in the, in the following draft, the final draft of the budget.
So those numbers will still continue to fluctuate, not necessarily volatile, but there's a lot of give and take that's going to continue going forward on that.
Correct. Understanding with what just happened with CPPRT and the state clawing back some of that, that means everybody's going to receive less local funding, so theoretically, there will be a few more districts that come back into Tier One next year and the following year.
Thank you.
Which will decrease that current $2.8 million that we have been allocated. We could come back eventually to the $1.3, for sure, right? And it's all dependent upon the state budgeting and setting aside $300 million on an annual basis for education, and that's always a risk as well.
For additional.
For additional funding over and above prior year.
Right.
To appropriate the additional $300, $350 million.
Okay, so CBF formula, which has been around for, is it four or five years right now?
Five.
Five. Is, in my experience, is a lot. Is, in my experience, is a lot less, a lot less predictable than the old general state aid that used to be able to tell within a few blocks what that was going to be, our future revenue would be. This is a much more complex formula, integrates, I think, 20 factors, I believe. It's, it's a far more complex formula where the other one used to be just that, what was your enrollment? There was the state foundation level and then they looked at what your tax extensions.
Your EAV.
EAV was, and that's really all that was. So it's, it's a little more unpredictable. And so my question then goes to, how does the hold harmless on an annual basis, is it, do you recalibrate every year?
Every year you recalibrate so you're held harmless to the previous year's dollars received.
Okay, so, so the part that would confuse me then is your Rockford example. How come they would lose? Is it just because of the tier, moving from the tiers, you're not held harmless?
No, they, they are held harmless, harmless, but what we're talking about here is the additional funding over and above.
Right, I get you.
Prior year. So they were accustomed to, and I'm making numbers up.
Yeah, getting a certain.
They're accustomed to receiving an 11 million of additional money each and every year under tier one and that went down to 5 million for them.
Yeah, I, I get you.
But that's because they slipped into tier two as an example.
That's all.
The hold on harmless is still part of the calculation.
Right, okay.
Yeah, which is good.
Because I'm just, I'm asking because I want to understand the future, how this works going forward. Okay.
Okay.
So real, real quick.
No, no, please. There's a lot there.
Regarding the tier one and the tier two, I know we are not, not deep in the tier one pool. Did you get concerned with tier two?
Well, that is a great question because I, I looked at all of that. So, so, so looking at last year's tier one districts, right? Because we moved into tier one last year. We were 55 districts away from tier two, okay? But last year there was 384, right? 384 tier one district for which we were 55th from the bottom moving into tier two. Another way to say that. This year, the tier one districts decreased as we talked about, right? A lot of tier ones went into tier two. In fact, this year it went from 384 to 340 districts. So now there's 340 tier one districts and Huntley, well, smack dab in the middle, we're 175th district from tier two. So we're actually moving up further away. So there is less risk that we will dip into tier two next year.
Because, and just for the, the audience, what is the impact if we move to tier two? I'm sure you've got that on top of your head.
Well, it was 550,000 last year. I will tell you the difference between 1.3 million and 695,000. I can't give you that exact number day with a few points.
Yeah, no.
But it would be, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, from a percentage standpoint, it'd be that. Almost double, right? It is almost double. So, so moving on, because I've got a few more things to talk about. Salaries, expenditure assumptions, salaries reflect the district's current collective bargaining agreements. Great. Obviously in the future, we know we have collective bargaining right around the corner. For FY '24, now we're going to talk about health insurance though. For FY '24 and throughout the forecast years, or I should just say for FY '24, we increased health insurance by 7%. Historically, we've been increasing our health insurance, our claims for our folks that are in the health plan by 5% a year. But this past year, well, health claims increased almost 18, 19% over prior year, over, over budget actually, not even over prior year, over budget, okay? And so we have the final health insurance number and that for last year, ending June 30th, 2023 was 13.29 million, 13.3 million. The budget for last year was 11.1. We're increasing the budget. The budget you have in front of you right now, we increased last year's budget by 7%. So the budget you have in front of you is only reflecting an 11.95 million budget for health insurance, yet last year we came in at 13.3. So we're almost 1.3, 1.4 million shy of last year's actual claims that came through. Now, we recognize and know that last year's actual claims are high because we have a lot of large claimants, our, our large claimants in the pipeline. And a large claimant is somebody who incurs more than 50,000 health insurance claims. Those doubled from the previous years and we had some really large claimants, some really unfortunate things happen to some of our employees and some of our employees' dependents. And so that's why it spiked the 13.3 million. Now, there's no guarantee that those large claimants are either healthy and rolling off. We hope that they are, but we really, it is really hard to predict where we think we're going to end up. But, but the reason I bring that up is that shortfall is, well, we just talked about EBS coming in at 1.6 million more than what we had estimated. And when we record that as revenue, I would like to match the revenue with the expense and rather than set these dollars aside for further instruction and further things that we certainly can use for our students, at the same time, we need to make sure that we have money set aside for our health insurance plan. So my, my goal, my, my, what I would like to do is use the majority of those funds to increase our health insurance to at least match last year's actual expense of 13.3 million, which I think would be prudent and financially responsible if we had those dollars because there's no, right? And if, if we don't hit those dollars, if we don't hit 13.3 million in claims again, well, then those funds will fall under, to operating surplus and be part of the district's fund balance to be used for other purposes. So I did want to share that. Capital expenditures, we talked about, our budget is at 3.12 million and do currently agree with our approved capital projects, most, most of which, which happened this summer from the roof replacement at the high school, DX cooling replacement, the high school food lab and the Heinemann makeup air unit and the high school's exterior, which we know replacements on the circle.
Mr. Elmer, before you go on.
Yeah.
Understanding that, you know, this past year was somewhat of an anomaly with the healthcare insurance. Do we have any data that goes back some years that, that we've had a gap as big as this? Because, you know, part of the problem over the last two years, what we saw during COVID and, you know, kind of working in, in healthcare, we saw a lot of elective procedures as well as preventative procedures being put off due to the pandemic. So while I, I do think it's, it's good to kind of have to cover the gap there, I, I wouldn't want to overreact to, to that. And I was hoping that you could go back and look at some prior year data to see what kind of gaps we've had in the past.
Absolutely. In fact, I have that data in front of me now. Looking back to 2019, right? We, actual health insurance claim expense for the district was 9.2 million while budget was 9.1. So we were right at budget essentially in 2019. We fell into the COVID year of 2020 and health insurance claims and expense dipped from 9.2 million to 8.5, okay? While we had a budget of 9.5 million, we did have a favorable, budget favorability of approximately 1.1 million. Then we go to 2021 and claims went from 8.5 to 9.8, a significant increase because those folks that weren't seeing the doctor in 2020, well, they were seeing the doctor in 2021. And so claims spiked almost 10 million. We held flat in 2022 from 9.9 to 10.1 million in 2022. And then from 22 to 23, we went from 10.1 to 13.3, right? And all along, we've had budget favorability or we had one year that it was right at budget, but we had budget favorability of a million, 200,000 in '21, 527,000 budget favorability in '22, but we had 2.1 million of unfavorability last year.
Right.
And so all I'm suggesting is that even if we budget the same at 13.3, we, the only year for which we saw a decrease in claims was that of the COVID year. Never have we ever seen a decrease.
Thank you for that.
So further food for thought. Great question though, thank you.
Good point.
Now let's get, talk about the modifications from the last draft because we did present the last draft. There's a lot of, a lot of adjustments in this draft because this was the draft where we made a lot of the federal funding adjustments, the SIR adjustments, the Cures Grants adjustments, the Title Grants adjustments. And all of those adjustments, the majority of those adjustments, we increased the revenue, recorded, recognized those grants for what they're going to be for FY '24 and the related expense. So there's very minimal budget favorability or unfavorability, although we'll, we'll talk a little bit about, there was 215,000 of favorability after booking all those because we were able to absorb some of those expenses with things that we are currently doing in the district. But some of those adjustments included recording, recognizing Title I at 257,000, Title II at 95,000, the IDEA flow-through grant at 1.843 million, that includes the rollover, the Art IDEA grant, that was a rollover of 124,000. The teacher vacancy grant, which we let the board know about 311,000. Last month, we recognized, last time we presented this draft to the board, we talked about the equity or the technology grant of 426,000. We have SIR III, the rollover was 271,000 that remains. We have the Cures After School Grant, which will be the last year of that grant at 244,000. And then we have the last year of the Community Partnership Grant at 323,000. So all of those revenues were recognized and the related expenses were recognized, leaving a net favorability of 215,000 that we just had talked about. Few other adjustments, while we booked a final CPPRT adjustment in the last draft, we had an adjustment, but, but the state of Illinois finally came out with their final estimate as to what they feel they're going to pay the school district. And we actually upticked that by 67,000 to 1.1, hold on one second, to 1.135 million. Two other adjustments were made and we're still going to probably tweak one of these, the private facility reimbursement adjustment. We increased that revenue to 156, up 156,000. And then we booked the orphanage claim reimbursement to actual at about 93,000 and that was an increase in revenue by about 71.8,000. So that was good news on that front as well. But the continued unknowns and risks with the budget and the future adjustments, right? Are, are kind of as follows. The big one is the adjusting the evidence-based funding amount as provided by the state of Illinois, the additional 1.6 million. And then we have the transportation category over rent. So the transportation reimbursement grant is done on an annual basis and it's based on last year's expenses of our transportation department. And based on that calculation, the state of Illinois looks at that and then determines what we are eligible to receive the following year. And that was just due to the state of Illinois. So we just finalized that. So we need to recognize that adjustment within the system. But then what'll happen is maybe, just maybe over the next three or four weeks, the state of Illinois will say, well, yeah, that was what the calculation shows, but we don't have enough money to pay out that.
Correct.
So they will either, they'll prorate that grant maybe a little more or maybe a little less. So we could receive a little more, a little less based on what the state of Illinois finalizes that grant to be. Right now, it looks like we would receive approximately, I have it here somewhere, approximately another 200,000 of additional revenue. But again, that's not solidified until the state of Illinois looks at a few things. To further compound it, we, upon review of that claim and that grant when we submitted it, I usually go through and I do a completeness testing on a lot of different things. And one of the things I did a completeness, completeness testing on was health insurance claims. Because we claim actual health insurance claims for individuals within Fund 40 in the transportation department and based on those actual claims historically over the years versus a prorated percentage of claims based on the number of employees in the plan, we do much better off in the state of Illinois, it's okay with that. And so we get the actual claim data from Blue Cross Blue Shield for all our transportation employees and that was other numbers we used. Well, you can't always trust everything you get from Blue Cross Blue Shield, I guess is my point. And just yesterday, I recognized that, oh, we missed a few employees or they missed a few employees in the reporting. And so I am seeking that data from Blue Cross Blue Shield. And once I receive that data, it'll add to the claim data we might receive a little more than that 200,000. So I just wanted to make the board aware of, of that. What else? Future adjustments, we already talked about transportation claim and EBS and health insurance. And then lastly, we always allow all of our departments, buildings, et cetera, to allocate some of their dollars within their budget based on their needs, based on last year's spend. And those may or may not necessarily happen in the draft that you receive next month. I put that here because those, those could just be budget allocations that we make as we move along in the budget process. A building, for instance, if the high school wants to move a little more money into instructional supply versus purchase services, their budget stays the same. We just simply move the monies so that we can better account for those monies during the school year. So we give them the opportunity for departmental budget allocation. So I want to end with it. So this is obviously the display draft, doesn't need to be approved tonight. I just wanted to share where we are. But I do want to end with this because I, I do recognize we do have four board members. And I know we've talked a little bit about, we do have a fund balance policy, okay? And the fund balance policy is to keep 25% of our, our fund balance to represent 25% of the operating expenditures of the district. So if the operating expenditures of the district, as an example, are exactly 100 million, we at the district should maintain a fund balance of approximately 25 million. And I remember in 2009, when, when I came to the district, I think the fund balance was at 16%. And the problem with having a very low fund balance is, well, you receive all the property taxes in the months of June and September, right? And we, throughout the year, will receive state funding, but the majority of our revenue that is coming from property taxes kind of, if you will, builds up our bank account so that, well, by the time we get to March and April, we have enough money so that we don't run out of money so that we can make payroll. So the state of Illinois actually suggests a 25% fund balance for that purpose, that school districts don't run out of money, so that school districts can make payroll in the months of April and May, right before they start receiving their tax payments in the month of June and September. So that's why there is a 25% state recommendation on fund balance and we as a board have previously approved that. And it took a few years, but we went from 16% to, to where we are today, over 33, over 34% net of that reserve for replacement. But what I also wanted to, to mention, and I'll, and then I'll get to you, Mr. Troy. And we haven't done this in a while because we haven't, we haven't needed to, but, but our fund balance at 33%, some would like to think that's incredibly healthy, but we do have one of the lowest fund balance percentages in, in the county versus other school districts. I think it's, I think it's good where it is, but I certainly don't, I don't really want to see us eating into it. But when we pass a budget and our, our expenses are increasing by four or five percent a year and our budget is currently at 125 million of operating expenditures, salaries and benefits alone approximate that 100 million. In fact, I think within this budget, they're at 97, 98 million, right? And so what that tells you is we should be budgeting to maintain that 25% fund balance pace. If our expenses are increasing by 4 million, we should be budgeting, trying to budget a surplus of 1 million, 25% so that we can keep pace, at least try to keep pace with that current 33% fund balance. Now, knowing those two percentages don't align, obviously we're going to come down a little bit, but it should always be the goal of the district to achieve that. And I share that just because it is okay if we budget a million surplus, well, we're following the guideline of that 25% fund balance reserve policy. But that's why I share that.
I was going to add a little bit more to it and this is for the benefit of people in the audience. There was a time that school districts, when they couldn't make payroll, that they would have to take out short-term loans called tax anticipation warrants. That's a very slippery slope. It, it, in my mind, it's always been the, the story of Wimpy from the Popeye cartoons who would have a hamburger today and pay for it next Thursday. That's kind of the same thing. You're, you're having the money today and you're going to pay the debt in the short term. Where that becomes a slippery slope is because it's a short-term debt that has to be paid against future revenues that come in. So if you don't have the money to pay for it tomorrow, you're going to end up taking another warrant out, another loan out and continue to propagate that. And now you've got theoretically a stack of tax anticipation warrants, TAWs. And now you've got theoretically a stack of tax anticipation warrants, TAWs, and you're burying yourself in short-term debt, which is not a recipe for success. I don't think this school district has done that in 25 years. I think, I think there was a time when we did that. I know there are other districts around here that have done that, I'm not 100% sure about us.
I would have.
No, no, and I'm not trying to sound the alarm, but that's, that's kind of the slippery slope that you run up against when you don't have enough money in your account to make payroll.
It was the early 2000s that we did that. We haven't been close to having to do that.
Again, that's not to sound an alarm and say, and be an alarmist. It's to provide additional information.
To be clear, Mr. Almeyer, we have no problem making payroll, correct?
No, no problem.
Thank you.
So over the years, have we dipped into that fund balance? And is that a line item in this budget that we could see what we're at in that balance?
We've only once, within my time in 15 years, budgeted a deficit. Well, I shouldn't say that. Back in the 2009, 10s, and 11s, when the State of Illinois was threatening not making all four categorical payments, there was a period of time, and it was, it was, the State of Illinois, as we all know, is a financial mess, and they were worse in 2009, 10, 11. So the district at that time made budget cuts because we were only budgeting 50% of the categoricals. And in those years, we were budgeting kind of a deficit position, knowing that if the State of Illinois did actually make those categorical payments, we would be okay. But that was the only time we've ever done that, until a few years ago, when we budgeted a deficit as a result of, well, to give back of money for registration fees.
So is my understanding correct? Maybe I'm not understanding this right, but the fund balance is a reserve. Is that, is that an accurate description?
Yes, yes. And some districts do absolutely dip into their fund balance, and we've dipped, I'd say we've dipped. You know, years ago, when we had extra dollars coming in, we created a reserve for replacement because we knew we had roof replacements coming down the pipeline. Every building years ago needed a roof replacement. And during that time period of 2009, 10, and 11, I always use the phrase, it was, we were kicking the can down the road on everything. Everything capital, we were kicking the can down the road because we didn't have funds to do the things we needed to do. But then there was a period of time where general state aid was starting to really come in because EAV was going down, and because EAV was going down, our state funding was going up, and we had excess dollars, and we were able to set capital dollars aside for future use. And so we have dipped into fund balance via the reserve for replacement. That reserve for replacement at one point in time was $7.1 million, and it's now $4.1 million.
And we have to keep that.
7.5, excuse me, down to 4.1.
Okay, so that's our current reserve right now?
That's our, well, we have a reserve for replacement for future capital needs, and that's a restricted balance for which the board had said, we can only use those dollars for future capital needs if we, if we have a situation that we absolutely need to dip into that. But we can dip into fund balance. We absolutely can, but it's just where we are with our fund balance reserve of 33-ish percent. I just wouldn't recommend it.
Right. And not that rates are great right now, and no sign in the future for it to be great, but we have to keep that liquid. It's not an investable account that.
Oh, it's absolutely investable.
Oh, no, no, we invest, we invest.
Absolutely investable, right, yeah. But not at high-risk investments.
Correct. We have, small school districts have a very conservative investment policy, and we ladder our debt accordingly to try to maximize interest earnings.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So with that, you know, I just wanted to share that with the board. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I do feel this is a very, very strong budget, a very solid budget. You know, I'll say the same thing next month, but we have some dollars that are coming our way that are going to be able to help us on health insurance and maybe some other areas as well, maybe even future collective bargaining, but glad to report it out.
So the only, my question isn't on the current budget, it's going forward, in terms of some of these grants that, this is like their last year, so my assumption is the expenditures that are aligned with those grants will be going away.
Correct. So that calls, you know, a lot of people, maybe even the audience, hear of the term called funding cliff, right? And the funding cliff is, well, you don't want to have a funding cliff. You don't want to rely on all these funds coming in from the federal government because of COIV, because of ESSER, because of all these other grants we're receiving. And some districts are using those dollars for salaries and benefits. And so when the federal dollars stop coming in, well, there's a funding cliff. You still have all these expenses, and you have no matching revenue. So part of the reason that the last several drafts of the budget did not include those revenues and include those related expenses is because, well, we don't have that funding cliff. So when these ESSER dollars go away, we may have to absorb a few things here and there, but we don't have the funding cliff that we're talking about, which is good.
Right. Again, my, my mantra has always been recurring revenues, recurring expenses, and making sure those going in the out years, not the current budget years, don't get out of whack where you start getting sideways. So that's correct. It's always my biggest concern.
And that would be called matching revenues and book expenses, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, with that, thank you, Mr. Almeyer.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to number 11, President's Report. So just a couple of things I wanted to bring up. First, I appreciate the public comments, and I've gotten some emails similarly stated, and I'm going to sit down with some folks about talking through my position on levy and the funding and things like that. But I just wanted to kind of make a comment. The discussions around the budget are twofold. One is the revenue side of things, the other side is the cost side of things. So when I look at the budget, and if I have priorities where I believe we should figure out a way to pay our teachers more, and I look at the budget and the revenue limitations that the State of Illinois puts on us through PTEL, and what happens in the out years where we're going to be limited to 2% or 3% increases, I look at the budget and I say, we have to restructure some of the cost side of things to prioritize the spending to be on the teachers so that we can reach the excellence that all of us want for this district. So when I'm talking about it, and when I have questions about the budget, my question is really around on the cost side. Are we as efficient as we possibly can? And are we doing the right things to impact the education for our kids? So this is going to be an ongoing discussion. The levy vote is in December, so we have a lot of time on that. It sounds like we got some good news on this budget, quite frankly, and I appreciate all the updates there. We flipped from a deficit, I think the last time we voted it, to a surplus here, or maybe a bigger surplus is what happened on this one. So, and in the outlying years, there are some surpluses as well. So that's kind of just point one. We're going to have this discussion. We have to look at the structure of this if we want to fix, in my mind, some of the things that we're doing on how we're paying the teachers. I'd like to fix some of those things. The second thing is, I had the opportunity to watch the staff kickoff on Monday with Ms. Murray. I thought Ms. Lombard gave a brilliant speech, I thought it was really good, and I really was glad, I would say later, to see it. Had an opportunity to fit in on the CHAMP training a little bit at Marlowe and a little bit here at the district office on that, and it was really interesting, as somebody who's not in education, hearing how that training happens, and it was, it was actually kind of fascinating to see specifically the interaction that happened here at the district office. So I really appreciate the opportunity to that, and I think the focus on the CHAMP and the behavior side of things was a good choice of trying to reset the expectations of how our classrooms should be, because that's something I really believe in, and we really need parents stepping in, and we need our kids coming prepared, good students, good listeners for that, and we need to help our staff learn how to manage the classrooms better if they can with that. Lastly, on a little bit different note, I have to say I'm a little bit disappointed in some of the departures in the dual-language side, some families have moved out of there. And I'm bringing this up not to pick on it, but just to make it out there. I felt like we could have found a way to kind of mitigate some of that situation, and the dual-language program is very important specifically to the homes where families speak Spanish at home, and we really need to find a way to make sure we're supporting them. So I strongly believe in that. I understand there's limitations and how we can do that, but I'm kind of hoping we could have, we found a way to mitigate that. Those are my comments on that. Again, wonderful start of the school year. I know my son had a good few days on that, so it was good. And hearing that, there's always going to be little issues, but we'll work through those, and we'll try to work to get better. So with that, any open board discussion for new members? All right, with that, I will move on to number 12, Policy and Legislation Committee. I don't have any updates specifically. I do have a request for an agenda item for the committee of the whole. It might be board-driven. I think, as I'm reading things, and I think we've talked about this, we need to kind of contemplate having a specific board committee for parent-teachers around this. I believe it's in legislation. I think we'd be more compliant in legislation if we had a board committee for this. So I think that's something we should discuss with the next committee of the whole, of how we would form that and go forward with that. But that would be a separate meeting from this one, where we would have parents and teachers in the hall in that. So I kind of, we've talked about that, and that was part of your behavior discussion. Any questions or comments on that? All right, moving to number 13, Community Relations and Student Outreach. Ms. Murray?
Yeah, all right. So we just had a handful of FOIA requests. Anybody have any questions on those? And then I wanted to echo what Mr. Bittman said about the CHAMP training, where the teacher does really need to go around from different campuses and meet people and watch and see the techniques or learn them, and that was really cool. And also, I wanted to encourage everybody to sign up for the Hoot and Nannies. I think I'm going to be there, so I think everybody needs to be there. I've never gone, so I'm very excited to do that. So I'm like, I'm looking forward to doing that. And then, and then my son started school back here. He hasn't been here for a couple of years, so he's very excited, and he's loving, loving payroll. So they're having a really good time. So kudos to all the teachers and the staff and whatnot. So next, we're going to, I'm going to head over to Ms. Bar, have a little presentation on what we're doing in Communications.
Oh, good, thank you. There was me just one moment here, I'm going to share my screen. Good evening, Board. I am Denise Bar. I'm Director of Public Engagement and Communications. Sorry, this is better? Thank you. Director of Communications and Public Engagement. I appreciate the opportunity to share just a little bit about my role and what I do, as well as our communications specialist for the district. So just a little bit about me. While I am brand-new to Huntley, I spent the past nine years at District 47 in the same, in the same role as Director of Communications. That was a wonderful experience, and I gained a lot over there. And just recently, in June, I completed a program called MY APR, which is Accreditation in Public Relations. So this is a certification that you can get through the National School Public Relations Association, PRSA. But basically, it takes a strategic approach to public relations and communication, which I'll get to in just a few minutes. I graduated a few years ago from Drake University with my degree in Journalism and Mass Communications, and I'm currently the President of the Illinois Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association, which has been a fantastic experience so far. That is my professional development group, and school communicators across the state, really, that come together for professional development purposes. So Kimmy Moore, you may have heard of just a little bit ago, because Kimmy put together that amazing back-to-school video. So she is, she specializes in video and photography and is my right-hand person here, especially as I'm getting acclimated to the district. She's been a huge support. So she's been with Huntley since February 2022, so not all that long, but certainly longer than I. She also has a communications degree. She went to Illinois State University. And like I mentioned, she specializes in graphic design. She'll do a lot of that type of work for us, creating flyers, graphics, the social media, helping out with some website stuff, so she does a lot. So why we're here? So ultimately, the Communications Department is here to support the leadership team and to carry out the district mission of inspiring, challenging, and empowering all students always. And how we do that, I broke down really into four points here. So we start by educating and informing all stakeholders about the district, okay? So our staff, our parents, our community about different operations of the district, as well as all the things that are happening. We also are charged with highlighting and celebrating our students, our student growth, our student achievement, as well as our staff, which is kind of that next bullet. So elevating the district status as a destination district to ensure that we're attracting a quality workforce. That's another way that we can help. So whether it's working with HR, that's something that you're, we're seeing more and more school communicators get involved with, to try to draw those, you know, to keep teachers here and also to draw quality educators in. And then finally, another key component that we work on is the seeking and building relationships with community. So making sure that our community understands things about the school district, that they get to get involved, as they want to be, that ultimately leads to greater student success. So ultimately, our goal is to, as a Communications Department, to increase support for and understanding of the school district. So how do we support? Just drilling down a little bit more here. So I mentioned briefly that we can serve as strategic advisors to the leadership team, to the superintendent, to even any of you, because we think with a little bit of a different lens. So I'm not an educator. So part of what we're trying to do is to make sure that the many different audiences that we're engaging with as a school district understand what we're talking about. And I commend all of you tonight, as we get these different reports, you're making an effort to ensure that those listening, those that are here, are understanding what we're talking about. But that's part of what I would strive for in our communications that we're putting out routinely, is that we're speaking in terms that our community can understand. So that, I sort of covered in my, in the second bullet point here, but providing timely, transparent, and streamlined communication to all stakeholders, and we do that in a variety of ways. So some of the areas that we oversee would be the website, social media, print publications, newsletters, and mass notifications, which consists of the email, text, phone, through a platform called Twit Reach. So also, we're supporting by collaborating with community partners, managing promoting events, working with the media, and fulfilling Freedom of Information Act requests. Double check here. So I just included a couple of slides here. So as part of my Accreditation in Public Relations, before we create a comprehensive communications plan for a district, and that is what I will be working on this year, that will include a crisis communications plan, there's a four-step process that is involved, and this will be familiar to some of you, which is research, planning, implementation, and evaluation. It's just about practice, and it's sometimes known as BRACE, it's sometimes different things, but that's very much what the APR was all about. So what I will be doing this year is trying to work on the research part of this, okay? And just making sure that we're hearing from all stakeholders. And I'll be working with Ms. Lombard in this regard too, to do that in a variety of ways. So one of the things we're going to try to do is to streamline communication. There's a lot happening here, and parents have different tiers of communication that they're receiving, right? So they've got the teacher communication, and they're going to get communication from their child's school, and then they're going to hear from the district. And we kind of know that they probably prefer it in that order, teacher is number one, school's number two, and we don't take it personally, district is number three. But all of that gets to be very noisy for parents, on top of everything else going on in their lives, on top of social media and all of that. So my goal, right out of the gate here, is to try to streamline things a little bit by providing routine communication that parents will come to expect. Why is that important? It's important so that the district remains the official source of information about the district. When you don't have predictable communication for parents and staff, parents start seeking information elsewhere. That's when they're going to probably go off to social media and be like, well, you know what? know what, I haven't heard about this, and so I am just going to go find it. So by providing these channels and things that parents can come to expect when they're going to hear from us and what they're going to hear from us, really helps us maintain ourselves as the official source of information. So a couple of ways we're going to do that this year is, Ms. Lombard mentioned this earlier, but we are gonna, for staff, and our internal communication is key. That's priority. If staff know what's going on here, they're going to be able to speak to this out in the community, they're going to be able to feel informed, they are a priority audience. So we're going to start by having a monthly district newsletter, then we'll go out to staff after the CAL meetings, okay, a slightly different time of the month. And then that's our electronic communication. And our in-person communication right now, among other things, will be kind of this revival of the bar meetings. With union officials, this is something that Kevin will get involved with, and Ms. Lombard will, will help lead and will be able to do some in-person collaboration with staff. In terms of parents from the district, we did talk about this, but we'll have a monthly district newsletter. Our first one's coming out on Sunday. And also, we're going to ensure that our schools are all communicating in the same frequency. So they're all going to be communicating weekly with parents, and again, on a consistent basis, same time every week. It just really helps parents to know when and what they're getting, from whom. And then, something we also are doing new this year is to have another in-person opportunity for two-way communication through these parent advisory group meetings. So it is our intention to set up a parent advisory group at every school, and then also to have a steering committee here at the district. And this is our opportunity for that two-way communication, which is really important, so that we can bounce ideas off one another, so that we can understand, you know, are we hitting everything we need to in our newsletters and all that, or do we need to take a deeper dive on certain topics? So this will help generate ideas for parent university and, and things like that, that parents really want to engage with us more on. So another focus for this year will be on transparency, equity, and inclusion. In terms of students, what that means is that we're going to make an effort to try to highlight the diverse programs and learning opportunities here in the district. We're also going to continue to seek opportunities for student voice, for student feedback. Ms. Lombard mentioned this a little bit earlier, just getting students more involved. We were talking about some of the sustainability awards and things like that. So I think that's something where the Communications Department can really be instrumental in trying to highlight that student voice. And then in terms of the board and the community, and making sure the community is aware of, one of them is very, very basic, they're just aware of our board meetings. So, you know, this is something we'd like to promote a little bit more. I think it's great that we're, that we're live streaming and all of that, but just making sure that our community stays informed on what our board meetings are, that they feel invited to come. And then another thing will be on the backside of that is providing kind of a recap of the board meetings. So we can do those, they will not be detailed minutes, but just a quick recap, or brief, if you will, after the meetings that we can share with our stakeholders in our parent newsletter.
If I can interject just quickly?
Sure.
So we've had several people here from Sun City?
Yes.
Over the, over the weeks, right?
Yes.
So where do those folks fit in in this communication?
Thank you for bringing that up.
And I'm sorry if I'm jumping ahead a couple of lines.
You're not, you're not. And you know, I'm not looking at my notes. So I get so excited and I don't look at my notes. So I have that in my notes. So thank you. So I have already had the pleasure of interacting with so many different people in this community, and I did want to just highlight that because it's unique. It's, it doesn't happen every day, and it's something special about Huntley that I sensed immediately, and I'll give you a few examples. So I do have a meeting set up with someone over at Sun City. I have engaged with these gentlemen over here tonight and met them and got a phone call from you today, so we'll be talking. So, you know, the village has reached out and said, hey, we want to meet, let's meet, and we're going to talk about crisis communication with the police department. Fantastic, done. We've done that. I've also had the same experience working with Lake in the Hills and Algonquin Police. Everybody seems vested in trying to work together and collaborate, and it's, it is amazing. And at the same time, the person I've gotten to know over at the village said, hey, let's go over to Sun City together. Let's, let's go, let's go see who's over there. So it's, it's been incredible. I see a lot of potential with that type of spirit, and, you know, I'm used to being the one to reach out, but I already have people here reaching out to me. So it's been really great. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Absolutely. What else did I forget? I did mention our first responders. I did go to one meeting, the CHART meeting, which is the PIO. So sometimes people call people like us PIO, Public Information Officer. That's essentially what we are for the school district, and that's what fire and police call themselves. And I had the pleasure of talking with some of them the first day of school yesterday as well. So those, that's another example of ongoing communication and collaboration that, that I'll be involved in, but also Ms. Lombard is involved on, on her level with some of those same folks. Also, I did just want to add that a few weeks ago, Ms. Lombard and Ms. Murray and I did sit down and we had a conversation about some ways that we can continue to enhance those community partnerships. So I took some notes in that meeting, and you're certainly welcome to see some of those ideas. So there's, there's a lot out there. These are just some of the things that we've discussed and collaborated on at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Bar.
Yeah, any questions, feedback, things you'd like me to consider that perhaps I haven't mentioned tonight?
I love the fact that you want to make, you know, the district website your main source of info, because I've been, I've been hearing chatter on how much improvement has been made, and you can really see it, and it's been very helpful. And even I've just gone to it just to see, and I'm like, wow, I can see a huge difference. So good job. And I'm glad you're here, and Kimmy, you guys are doing a great job. So and as far as the Sun City residents, I know that they reach out for to be resident guest readers, and I know that's going to step on the up and up. We want to do that too, and a lot of others. I'm really excited to work with you on figuring out all the things that we want to do. So, but you touched on everything that we talked about very well. That's why I'm like, okay, well, hey, it takes re-insensitive to the polls of the community to do what they're asking for.
My job?
Yeah, you're doing a good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
All right, if nothing else, we'll move ahead to the consent agenda, which we reviewed previously. So if there's no objection to that, go through here, and the prior to adoption provisions are presented here. I'll make a motion for speaking approval and adoption of the consent agenda as follows.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Gallagher. So can I have a roll call over?
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Crady?
Yes.
Action items, roll call, go to call. Action item, so 15-1, Ms. Lombard, recommend changes for board policy, 15-1.
So I believe it was at our July regular meeting, we had taken a look at press updates that were coming forward. There was one main one, just around the concession policy and group of who we needed to make sure was part of that. Others were just legal updates and things like that. So just here, the recommendation is to move these policies forward for a second reading because we do need to do two readings before that kind of.
Can I call out here? Do you want to vote on that?
No. It's not listed. Oh, it's not listed either, yes.
Action void.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to move forward with the recommended changes.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Crady. Can I have a roll call over?
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Crady?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
So each year, the administration works together typically over the summer months, looking at ways of our annual pursuit for moving the district forward for a strategic plan. We have tonight our end-of-the-year measures report for the 2022-23 school year that is looking at year three of our five-year strategic plan. And then next month, we'll be bringing forward our recommended measures and goals for the four areas for next full year. And shortly after that, we'll be looking at talking about updating that strategic plan and what that will look like, because we will be into our fourth year and want to have that offset prior to. So the Communications Department will be totally involved in that component there. Just a reminder, the four main areas for the strategic plan focus around four long-term goals, and as we said, many short-term measures and indicators that we're looking at. The first is all students achieve personal growth and development. The second is around all students are prepared to achieve their lifelong goals. Or third, all students learn in an environment that are safe, secure, and supportive. And the fourth, the district remains sustainable to meet the needs of the students and the community. A lot of that is focused around the students, and then the indicators and measures are about our programs, some of those are about our staff, our finances, and all of those things that'll make it achievable to do the things we want for our students. So I am going to toss it over to learning and innovation with Dr. Merkin though, just to talk about some of the academic goals, indicators that we had, and kind of where we, where we think, where we're moving, not necessarily what you'll be seeing next time, because again, we'll talk about those, but really the key areas that we focused on, and we'll be completely transparent, of our nineteen, of our 21 indicators, there were two indicators that we did not meet. We tried to set goals that are achievable but not so easy that we are not pushing ourselves in growing as a, as a district and in the community. And so while we would love to have seen 100%, we did know that there were a couple of areas that we were in stretch in, and we have already set the pace on how we are working to meet those in the future.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Lombard. So the first goal is the one we're looking at, our personal growth and academic achievement for our students. And you'll see that we had, we have four goals that revolve around academic performance. There are two goals that are about students' individual growth, and that is looking at, we partner with EGRIS, which is a data warehouse company and handle a little company, and they help us take a look at each kid's individual growth, and they measure themselves against their prior performance throughout all their time here in Huntley. And so we did meet our goals in reading for that one, we did not make our goal in math for that. We are not able to talk quite yet about our state data because it's embargoed and it's not official, but we are looking at preliminary data, and we are confident that that is happening more at our 612 level versus our K5 level with that data that's coming in. And so we started making some, you'll see in our strategic plan we present next month, some very specific targeted goals to help, I guess, adjust that. So we are disappointed that we did not make that goal in full transparency, but we know that we can do something to help increase that. You'll see with our performance and our proficiency data as well, just goal three and four. For ELA, we did meet that with our projected scores, but then when it comes to the math, we did not meet that. And so math is that area that we need to hone in on and help support our students and staff in making sure that we can move that mark along. So that was our academic piece. You'll see throughout the rest of that first goal. We are proud of the literacy work that we've been doing at our elementary level, and we're excited to continue to see that data roll up as our kids graduate to different grade levels. But we've shifted to that structured approach of literacy, bringing a science of reading perspective, really focusing in on phonics and helping to support our kids at the early ages to then shift their thinking as they grow older. So we did meet that goal. And then you can see as we go to goal two, as we're looking at all of our students, there was a goal, two specific goals that we're excited that we did meet, that we wanted to try to target our students with IEPs and really make sure that we were providing and meeting their needs. And so those goals are written around the kids' individual performance, and we wanted each child to meet their projected performance goal. And so that, we did increase the percent of students in both math and ELA of students with IEPs and meeting their projected growth. And so that was celebration, and we wanted to make sure that we have that with the focus of ours of last year. I believe those are the most academic ones as far as.
Yeah, real briefly, I mean, just, I mean, the math, fairness, it was 84 was the goal with 83% of the guys or so. I mean, but we fell short.
Correct.
Not terrifically short.
Right. Take your point out. We definitely want to overshoot that 84 because we want our proficiency to increase, and we know we want to get above 84% of students meeting that. So absolutely, we also know that with a new program or resources or implementations sometimes, and then as we dive into our data in the next month or two, as that becomes public, we'll be able to tap through some of the things that we're seeing and predicting as to why that might happen.
Thanks for bringing up that implementation. So it was like, first year for 612, it was also just a phase-in year, pilot year for the elementary, and that rollout is continuing. So other areas to highlight in there, there have.
No, didn't sound like you were on.
I didn't sound like you. I don't know. I'll talk closer. Some other areas to highlight in, there are some crossovers from goal one and two, which fall into academics versus some of the other areas. But we have had a number of phases for a variety of our plans. One of those that you talked about was the literacy plan, of the district personally, personalization of learning plan, and then our college and career framework, and our equity action plans. And so those were laid out a number of years ago in phases we were in. So just to kind of highlight with that personalization of learning, a lot of work revolved there around some of our course expansions, some online, online-type courses. We've had blended learning pieces there. We've looked at the change in instructional practices at the elementary and even in the middle school level for some of the small group type of instruction, flexibility and our bootings there. And so those were parts of the phase, I believe it was, I think many of them had a five-year phase, so we're, we're getting close to the end of those. Our college and career readiness is one. I know that we've had the learning and innovation department talk a lot about, but something to be very, very proud of with our schooling rollout last year. And I believe we've got some through communication, just helping parents, how do you get in? How do you utilize that? It's only year two of that, so some things that we'll be pushing out to, again, help our parents understand how to utilize those so that they can better be prepared to help their students. But through that, we have a plan at our middle school level and then eventually to bring down to elementary to include those college and career readiness components. We've looked at that through our counseling department, with creative communications, our dual-degree program enhancing. One of those areas was around added, and as you know, we took a look at that and didn't want to rush through that, making sure that we had things set, not trying to fit something into the schedule, but really looking at what is best for our students and how to do that. So you'll see some of that kind of coming forward next year with some of our plans there. Around the equity action plan, really looking at that social emotional side and really trying to meet the needs of our students around that with our data. We will be bringing forth, again, the next phase of that and how we are shifting to meet the needs. We'll probably be seeing some changes with some of the surveys or assessments that we're using in this next version there to better meet the needs that we need to address, but also how do we utilize that? We have the data, does it really match what we need to use and how to make informative decisions on this? So we're probably having some changes with, with that coming down the pipeline.
Ms. Lombard, can I also add on the FBL component? We have been working about with our classroom teachers on the tier one, what those lessons look like, that every student is getting, robbing around the five capital competencies, which is self-awareness, self-management, and they're getting lessons consistently K12. And so Mr. Troy actually is working with our middle schools right now and use, utilizing advisory time and trying to make that be that time to be able to provide that. But those lessons really are targeted at how can I help myself be a better learner and how can I help myself be more aware when maybe I'm not able to approach the learning because I'm either frustrated, upset, whatever it might be, what are some of those skills that we can do for that? And so that's been a big focus.
Another indicator I want to highlight was the component around the staff satisfaction. And so there were multiple, multiple surveys that were sent out. Not only with that, we also had our open forums where we went from building to building. There'll be some goals next time on other ways to have a two-way communication, but really taking the information, analyzing, and reflecting it of what our staff's saying are the important things to target, what are the things that they are seeing, how do those match the things we're learning from our data, and hopefully seeing that we're listening and shifting those into the responses and the professional development, the type of support. Again, it's only first week there, but we want to carry that through, but really taking that information through those different communication gatherings that. that information through those different communication gatherings and utilizing that to change that environment. If we're able to change that environment for our staff, that absolutely is going to change the environment for our students and the way that they're learning. Nice to refocus, nice to refocus at the secondary level and with the middle schools, so those large middle schools gathering data from our students and our staff around bullying. We are, we took that information from all of those surveys and the two middle schools created action plans to roll out into the spring and we'll be continuing here to really listen to what students and the staff are seeing and saying about bullying and student conflict and how we are addressing those. You will see that coming forward next year with our strategic plan next month to do that at the high school level. To do all three at once was just too much to be able to take on and analyze, even though we were utilizing prevent school violence in Illinois. So again, really did feel that was valuable data that we did get successfully from our Indicator again in goal three was to campaign and to push out to families, our partnership on our student helpline. What we have with Smart Social is fantastic. We're going to continue to utilize that and to push that out, making sure that our families are aware of that. Our utilization needs to grow. That is something Smart Social is able to stay up on all of those things with technology, social media, all of that. And we will do better in pushing that out, but to get that kicked off and that student helpline being utilized at especially the secondary levels did help us know what was going on and to be able to address concerns, whether it was safety to oneself or safety in the building. We had the district safety plan will be updated and an action plan constructed in cooperation of the law enforcement agency. And that was something that we shared those reports for all of our buildings a couple months ago on safety improvements that we will be looking into. And then goal four around that sustainability to meet the needs of the students. You'll notice that there are a few around financial, fiscal health guidelines. We have met those on an annual basis and will continue to look at that component. One that we started last year and will be a continuation was to continue to identify and implement operational efficiencies, I believe it was last month, two meetings ago, that Mr. Altmaier, you shared some of those efforts that we did around this measure and we can only continue to enhance that. Again, to look at the spending in the operational side of that budget, where do we have things that maybe we need to shift or look at? And that was a great start to that last year and we will continue to move that forward into the next school year. And then the last measure was around parent and family university. That was a perfect segue with what we have with our special education department. We have a couple parent liaisons in our ELL department as well. And again, how can we continue to push out opportunities regarding student learning and supports for families with that? So a lot of that was around our special education department last year, but we met these goals here. And that too is something that we saw as part of our communication plan. We'll use that data and information. You will see a strategic measure around that moving forward. Mr. Troy, we don't want to spoil it for next month, but you brought up some city and some of the things there. We've definitely got some measures and indicators, especially around utilizing their expertise, whether it's through volunteering, meeting classrooms for discussions. There is so much wealth of knowledge and experience there and we've got some pretty creative ideas that we think we can do, bringing in more individuals there to be part of our school district. So stay tuned on that. So when we look at all of those at the high level, you guys will be able to ask some questions specific to any here that you have, but we, outside the math, were able to meet 19 of those areas. We did progress and as you said, Mr. Quinlan, we are close to the math and we will get there next time with that, that piece of that. So what we did fall short to there, it was a 90% achievement of our annual pursuit towards that strategic plan and moving our district along. So any questions at this time?
No questions? All right, then I'll make a motion to move forward with the recommendation to approve as presented. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Carvallano?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
All right, with that, it will move forward. We move to 15.3 supplemental purchasers, Mr. Altmaier.
Hey, Andy, or Mr. Bittman. I got a question. Do we skip?
Oh, did I skip something?
Do we skip a bunch?
The consent agenda.
Or did I? No, I know, but I mean, this part is like, we didn't do like human resources or payables or curriculum. Did we skip a bunch?
They were part of consent.
They were part of the consent that we talked about.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure. I'm trying to follow in.
No problem, Laura.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Altmaier, please do not leave the all purchasers. No, there's nothing to add. That was an update. That was a really important update I had to give. Nothing to add to that. All right, I will make a motion to move forward with approval of the supplemental purchasers. Can I have a second?
Second. I have one second.
We'll give it to Mr. Thompson. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mr. Carvallano?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All right, with that, we will move forward. Motion passes. 15.4 equipment declared as surplus.
Thank you very much. On an annual basis, actually usually several times during the year, primarily with technology-related equipment, we need the board to approve the disposal of certain equipment and things that we have in the district. And so before you, I have a list of, well, a lot of old teacher laptops, Chromebooks, and every once in a while, you have to look through the list to find unique things like cassette players. There is one overhead projector on this list.
Two.
There's a portable TV player, a Casio projector, but my favorite, by the way, is the Kuno.
Yeah.
Does everybody remember the Kuno?
Oh, yeah.
There is a Kuno. So I also, at your, at your, at your place, you do have a hard copy of this because we did change this after Tuesday and we only added two items. And the last two items that we added were two 2009 diesel buses that didn't make the last list that we do want to dispose of. And so they are also on this list and we are asking the board to approve this list to be declared as surplus to dispose of.
And are they, are they part of the, the electric buses you had to do the, you had to get rid of?
Correct. So we ended up, we ended up holding back, trading in and disposing of a lot of buses at that time when we purchased our last nine propane. So that's why we had so many excess 2009 done a lot because at that time, we didn't trade them back in because we were holding them because we knew we were awarded funds for electric buses. And as part of the electric bus purchase and as part of that grant acceptance, we need to get rid of the diesel bus to accept the electric bus and to receive the million dollars in funding awarded to.
So as a point of clarification, Mr. Altmaier, when we say disposing of, are we literally just throwing these away or is there a recycling program or is there?
There's a recycling program that we use with the tax department to review all these items and take these items off our hands. More often than not because they're clearing hard drives and things of that nature. It used to be if we were giving them equipment, we would receive pennies on the dollar for it, but now it's just take it off our hands, they clear it, they clean it, and we really don't receive any benefit.
In the past, I know we've let these Chromebooks go for, you know, five bucks sometimes. Are none of them salvageable like that?
Well, what we use, we use almost all of our old Chromebooks. We harvest our old parts, usable parts, whether it's screens, I don't have my tech notes here. Buttons, a lot of things that rather than sending them out for repair, we repair our own Chromebooks when we harvest our own parts. So if you were to see my own Chromebooks here, they're not usable.
Yep, gotcha.
Just one comment before we move forward and approve this. There's a lot of waste here. It's just, I don't know if people recognize how many of these Chromebooks just ultimately get disposed. There's, if you're looking at the environmental side of things, we throw out pages and pages and you think about every school district doing this, it seems like there should be a better way. I'm not saying there is, but it's, there's a lot of things to get disposed. All right, with that, I'll make a motion to seek approval of the equipment declared as surplus in 15.4. Can I have a second?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Craddy. Can we, I think there's a roll call over.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mr. Carvallano?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All right, with that, the motion passes. We will move on to the next, which is our ending of the meeting, public comment. The first one, I have two, is Kathleen.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for putting public comment at the end. It gives us opportunity to give feedback. But really what I wanted to give my public comment about tonight is really the parent liaison role. We talked about it tonight, but I think it's understated. It's a really important role. I've finished been at it from it myself many times. Just envision as a parent, you raise your child and all the different obstacles and things you have to make and help decisions on. We talked about some of them through the IEP process, being part of the school district, but really what's important is when they start to age over 18. I don't know about any of you, but to stand in front of a judge when you've raised a child up to the age of 18 and have to justify yourself as a parent in order to help them continue because once they turn 18, you can't talk medical, you can't, there's a lot of different things that you're not allowed to interact about and this is your child. So that Jill, what she does and the role and how she helps parents is very intimidating. And I'll tell you what, the judge that we have in McHenry County right now does not make it very comfortable for the individual that has the disability or for the parents. And I've also talked to Jill about are there ways that we can work with the county to make that experience a little bit more friendlier, especially for the individuals with a disability. So that's just something on my perspective. And then when they do the workshops, when you get to the point of when your child ages out and you talk about the ARC and some of the other services, I know Mr. Altmaier talks about his acronyms here and you kind of roll it through your head. Go to one of these, you know, workshops and hear what somebody from the ARC says and they throw words out that you've never heard before in your life and you know you have to face that to do what you have to do for your child. So I just want to make sure that we know and to thank Jill and Ms. Gil and that service is so important, we need to continue it. And also too, when parents make recommendations of services or things that they've used, believe me, your ears pop up and you trust that recommendation versus just hearing it from anywhere else, from somebody else. So I just wanted to share that with you. And my final comment is, yes, I am signed up for the Hoot Nanny, so is my son. And we enjoyed it last year. We hope we have the same weather that we did last year. I don't know if anybody can do anything about that, but also too, we have also extended advice to other individuals outside of this district that have children with disabilities and we hope they're going to participate and do the walk with us. So just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our last public comment is Carrie Croft.
I will second the loving the public comment at the end. I just wanted to say a couple of things. Thank you for the starting point for the tech pop-up warning. It's a great start and I appreciate that stuff in the right direction. I know it's only the first few days, but we need to request more traffic control at Halleghast that exited Marlowe. The kids that cross there, I don't know how it's safe at all. There was a car, there was an adult helping them cross today and a car was this close to hitting that kid. And it was horrifying knowing that there's all sorts of police that could just be standing there for 10, 15 minutes doing something. Otherwise I have to start going to the Lake and the Hills Board meetings and I really don't want to add that to my life. Okay. All right. I also want to suggest putting the we're hiring signs up at the large entrance signs at each campus instead of the register now. The little signs that we have there, you cannot read any of it going 40 miles per hour if you're going only 40 miles per hour. So those big signs that say read road campus or whatever, put them there. The other thing, I'm not sure if you've all had a chance to see the social media slurrings of the bus times and overcrowding. I guess that it's the first couple of days and it'll be a cluster, but we have to make sure we aren't leaving kids unattended, but more importantly, that we're not violating safety laws on moving vehicles. The presentation about communication is fantastic. I literally just beg for communication constantly in here and I was writing probably faster than you were talking. So some of the things I said, you actually did say you were going to do, so excuse me. I'm going to read so it makes sense. Using our tools of actually ensuring families are getting communication so they can attend events is highly important. In addition to all of the things that are posted on our school Facebook page, is that we should be putting a notice that there are board meetings happening and the links to the YouTube page and the link of the agenda attached and of course, the summary like you said. Encourage the staff to share the social media info as well. We have a lot of staff and we usually get two to three shares. That's, that's not even you guys. That's pathetic. All right. Quick question, are you still counting curriculum goals by counting some students' grades with IEPs towards honor rolls? Students like my daughter who struggle with kindergarten math as an eighth grader, she made the junior high honor roll last year. I certainly hope that her honor roll scores weren't counting towards her good curriculum And then you mentioned Smart Social. They recently posted debunking, debunking the Saturn app. I know that our school does not promote that, but I just wanted to do a little PSA for the people that do tune in. However, this app is not promoted here, it still needs to be shared to warn your kids from using this app to prevent student-to-student stalking. I attempted to create an account and I got way further than I should have been allowed to without any verification. I was able to see students named, the school, the grade, way more information than I should have any access to. Of course, I deleted my account because I don't need that information, but it's out there. So if you guys have time, just put a little PSA, warn people. Of course, I'm all about student safety, so please, please, please do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, I will make a motion to adjourn at 9:05 PM.
Second.
And I have a second, Mr. Carvallano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the meeting is adjourned.
Look at the board.
Altmeier had to read his entire budget.
There you go.
Are you more...
Last one.
Wait for me.
Mark, bring it, bring it.
All right, no.